All right, let's see if we're up. We are up. All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July 29th, 2025. It's now 9:00 a.m. We're here for a regular session of Hunt County, or a special session for the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. We have Commissioner Hutchins is absent. In attendance is Commissioner Monroe, Smith, and Harrison. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting today. At this time, we'll have public testimony. All speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Is anybody signed up? Jan? Anybody wish to speak? Now I'll close the public testimony. Where's Daniel?
I don't have anything on my end.
Okay. Well, we'll come back to the old business because we need Daniel. Oh, there he is. There he is. Good morning. All right. Under old business, action items A, number one, to discuss and possibly take action on the general certificate for the North Central Texas Finance Corporation who intends to issue bonds for Seminole Family Mortgage Revenue Bond Series 2025. Did you get anything new on that, Daniel?
No, I did not. It's what was out about last month or four is the
Just for
Certificate for the mortgage revenue bond.
Right, which is what they've always done in the past, so.
That's right.
And it's going to first responders, teachers, and I don't remember all the categories, but
So they say.
So they say, yeah.
Yeah, it's not limited to that.
Oh, it's not.
That's what they're selling at.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. All right. Entertainer motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number two, under old business, consider and potentially approve dispatch service agreement between Hunt County and American Medical Response Ambulance Service, Inc., a global medical response company. Daniel?
All right, this was discussed a little bit at the last court. There were some changes that we'd requested mainly related to the indemnification section and changes related specifically to the hospital's contract with them. There was a concern that if the hospital's contract ran differently, that it would leave the county in a strange position if the hospital eventually pulled out, but the county was tied to a specific longer period to end the contract. This new version, it's the top document on the packet that I just handed out. It's the one I emailed earlier this morning. And all of the changes, there's not very many of those changes, but they're all in blue. And all of the changes that we requested were approved by AMR. AMR is here this morning if you have any questions. But if you approve this, it would become effective on October 1st, a few months from now. And so the other thing that we talked about at the last meeting, potentially doing an order approving the exception to the Purchasing Act related to public safety is not necessary because the law changes on September 1st to allow $100,000 exception to the Purchasing Act minimums. And this is slightly more than the current amount, which is $50,000. So that is no longer an issue.
Okay.
If you approve it with these changes, it'll become effective October 1st, and no order is necessary.
Okay.
So we're going to approve it today even though as of right now, it's 50,000 below, and it still will be good come October 1st?
That's right. So the only issue with that is you need to vote to approve it if it becomes effective and is signed after September 1st. And so any motion would need to be, we approve it as presented or as written, but to be signed and become effective after September 1st.
And then as far as the terms goes, is this something that we look at every year? Is it multi-year? Obviously, the last contract, nobody's looked at it since 1993.
It had some automatic increases, didn't it?
It had, I think, a small percentage every year.
Yeah, that's what I
That's right. It's an initial term of three years. The term is on the third page. It's under item number eight. And this is kind of what's, it's referred to as an evergreen contract, so it will continue after three years. But either party has the ability to pull out after a certain amount of notice, 180 days. There's three different notice periods. If there's a breach on their part, we can pull out after 30 days. If there's no breach and there's no reason stated to pull out, the county can pull out after six months. Or there's the other part about the hospital. If the hospital pulls out, then the county can as well. But otherwise, it's an evergreen contract, so it's not going to, there's not a required review period, which is how most of the contracts like this work for the county.
Any other questions?
David, you got anything, anything you need to add? Good. Okay. Thank you for being here today.
Anything, any other discussion? Entertainer motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item three, under old business, consider and potentially approve renewal of Hunt County Reinvestment Zone Number Nine.
Okay, these are the last two documents in that packet that I just handed out. One of them is the original approval of the reinvestment zone. It was August 11th of 2020. Basically, the way that the current administration, the state government is going, every time the city or county or a special district orders or approves a reinvestment zone, that reinvestment zone has to be in place before any sort of development agreement for a tax abatement or other sorts of tax incentives can be approved. This one was done in 2000 and is either up for approval, or if you take no action, it will effectively become ineffective in 11-day, or well, on August 11th next month. This is for a 300, or sorry, a 229-acre solar farm that was one of the, it's a Signal Ranch solar farm that I believe is part of either FEC or one of the other power provision groups, not GEUS, but one of the others. Basically, the next-to-last document is the order that you would use if you approved it today. All that does is keep the tax incentives in place for another five years. And that contract, the pilot that we did is a 10-year pilot. And so this is going to need to be reapproved today and then another time about five years from now for the incentives that were approved five years ago to continue.
Okay. So if we don't change it, then does the pilot go away automatically, or?
It becomes ineffective, yeah, which presents contract problems. So if the county approves an agreement based on, you know, a ministerial action like reapproving a reinvestment zone, and then the county doesn't reapprove it, then that could potentially lead to lawsuit for breach of contract.
Well, we certainly got enough attorneys here to protect us on that, I think, today.
So on the legal side, what is your recommendation now?
To approve the order reapproving the reinvestment zone. And then if you do that, we will resubmit that to the Comptroller's Office through their new online portal for submitting those types of documents.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'll move action forward to the executive session. Under new business, A, the consent calendar, entertainer motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mary, we don't have anything from your office, do we? Nothing? Okay. Action item B, number one, physical year 2025-2026 budget. Commissioners, I think we have some guests here that want to speak to us, so they can come into the order they want to come, I guess. You're up first. You stood up first, so.
Thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I asked to be put on the agenda because I had a specific request from the Commissioners and the, and you judge on the budget. Most of you know me, I think. I don't know if you know what we do in our office, in the county attorney's office, but we have seven attorneys, two investigators, three legal assistants, and one victim assistance coordinator, and she's also an office manager. There's 14 people, including me. We deal with CPS, juveniles, involuntary mental commitments, misdemeanor assaults, DWIs, everything, possession of dangerous drugs, criminal trespass. We deal with all of that. We work hand-in-hand with law enforcement to achieve the objectives of keeping Hunt County safe and following through. After they arrest them, we follow through and prosecute them. Without one, if one side's broke, the other side's broke. If we invest in one side and don't invest in the other side, the system is broke. If they don't arrest, we can't prosecute. If we don't prosecute, they might as well not arrest. Last year, the prosecutors offices, I'm talking about the county attorney's office and district attorney's office, were the only two offices specifically singled out to not receive the cost-of-living adjustment of 5%. There was a motion July 8, 2024, that was made by this court, on the motion by Harrison, second by Martin, for the court to approve all salaried Hunt County employees to receive 5% cost-of-living raise. No one opposed. Motion carries. Somewhere down the line, the cost of living adjustment was left out for our office, for anybody receiving Senate Bill 22 money or pretrial intervention program money, where the state said if we do pretrial interventions, which is sometimes good for first-time marijuana offenses or people that deserve it, that are productive members of the community, you can do a pretrial intervention. Well, it takes another person to specifically deal with that. So there's funds that they said our office was allowed if we get fines and money from that, then it can go to an employee for that. But they were all excluded. This year, the proposed budget also excludes the Hunt County Attorney's Office and the Hunt County District Attorney's Office from the COLA raises. So I just wanted to mention that and say one, why I think that was done. Senate Bill 22, the state of Texas got together and they said, "Our small counties can't compete with Rockwall, Collin County. We can't compete with even Hopkins County. We can't compete with a lot of counties because we just don't pay our prosecutors enough." And they said, "We're going to supplement your salaries with Senate Bill 22 money. It doesn't cost the county taxpayers anything. The cost the state provides it. It's a grant." And they give it to us to raise our salaries, and it goes between, through 10 people, and it increases the salaries to try to make us more competitive. Now, we're not going to be able to compete with Rockwall, no matter what we do, and even with Senate Bill 22 money, sorry, we're not going to be able to compete with them. But you have to want to work here and want to work in Hunt County for a reason, like most of us here, why we have our jobs, to take these jobs. But every time our office is singled out, discriminated against, they chip away at what Senate Bill 22, what the state of Texas said it was designed to do, which is make us more competitive. We get less qualified people to prosecute. We can't fill positions. I can't hire qualified people if we keep chipping away at it, and that's a fact. I've hired one person earlier this year. He left because he got a higher-paying job in Hopkins County. It lasted like two, three months. I can't remember the exact, but two or three months.
Scott, I'm sorry to interrupt you. The SB 22 money, just, you know, guy's still catching up on things. Is it eternal money? Is it, what's the window of time on that?
It's not guaranteed. We don't know when it's going to stop. We don't know how long it's going to last. Hopefully, it lasts a while. I mean, surely, I mean, you know how politicians are. It depends. They could stop it next year. I don't think they are.
No, they can't stop it next year. They approved a budget for two years.
Okay, so we got it for two years. Good. I'm glad you know that. But it's not guaranteed.
Not guaranteed. Legislature has to vote on it every two years.
Okay.
It's my understanding. That's right. Yeah.
Okay. So it's not a guarantee, though, from here on out, to answer your question. Our entry-level position for an attorney starts at $88,000 with the county pays. I don't want to do comparisons to other people's salaries, but a prosecutor with two degrees and a license isn't going to want to practice law and make that amount of money. And there's many examples. They can go anywhere else to make more than that. Rockwall had $125,000 position open for someone with three years' experience. And they have opportunities for advancement, like Collin County and other counties. We don't because we're too small. Even with Senate Bill 22 money added to it, it's less than a lot of salaries around here. Again, don't want to start comparing, especially when we have to tell them that there's no room for advancement, and there's possibility that the Commissioners and the judge will not approve our cost-of-living adjustments, which is supposed to be for everybody, I thought. Collin County, they have room for advancement. There's a guy that works in my office that worked for them, and so there's plenty of room for advancement in Collin County. Don't want to lose him. My investigator, Kyle Wilesky, would have had to take a nearly $20,000 pay cut to come work for our office. I got him from the Sheriff's Department. Senate Bill 22 made up to where he has a comparable salary. But he would have had to take a $20,000 pay cut from what the Sheriff's Department salary was. That's county versus county. Our investigators do a lot. They do a whole lot. They serve warrants. They talk with victims. They protect us in the courtroom. We have women in the courtroom. They have their backs turned to people that are taking their kids away from. I said, "I want somebody down there so he doesn't stab her in the neck with a pencil." And so I want my people involved in helping to make sure my people are safe as well. But they also do it, they do it, everything they did, investigating cases, getting evidence, helping us with trial, talking to all the law enforcement agencies. We've got a good relationship with the law enforcement agencies right now, a real good relationship. It's getting better and better and better every day. And it's because of the people I got. If I lose them, we're going to lose, Hunt County's going to lose a lot. I'm not just talking about my people. I'm talking about Hunt County. We deserve better. We deal with murders. They had a murder trial last year. Sexual assaults constantly with CPS, constant sexual assaults of children. We deal with Child Advocacy Center CASA. We deal with women in need, all to protect Hunt County. We're getting, we're working harder, and the statistics prove it. Talk to the district judges about what we're doing in the county attorney's office. I challenge you to do that. Talk to the other judges. See what we're doing in Hunt County this year, since I took office. And it's not me. It's not me. It's because of the people I've got. They're expected to work. They work hard. They work 40 hours a week. They don't work from home. That doesn't happen anymore, except when our CPS attorneys are up sometimes all night long. They work. They're here. They work their butt off. And they're proud to do it, too. They want to work hard. They want the, they want what we got. No more half days. I'd said when I came in, Hunt County deserves better, and so far, we got it. Somebody said, "Get numbers," and I can get a lot of numbers, comparison, salary comparisons, who gets raises. I mean, that's maybe for a different time, but I believe my people deserve it. I believe Hunt County deserve it. Just the cost-of-living adjustments, the amount of morale that goes down with each cut, when you're talking about 8% of their salary, their county salary, the morale, kicking the teeth from doing that, is not worth the amount that we're talking about here. It's just not worth it. Somebody said, "Get numbers, other numbers, number of cases." Well, we submitted with our budget. We did some research. Through May 14, 2024, last year, there were 271 cases filed by the county attorney's office, 271. The same period this year, there were 450 cases filed. Why is that? My people and I am going out to the law enforcement agencies and developing that relationship that didn't exist before and exists now, and hopefully continues. We're developing relationships with the law enforcement, helping them submit cases, telling them what we need, and we're working directly with them. I expect, that's a 60% increase, over 60% increase. Just, that was just through May 14, 2024. We can keep getting numbers, but I expect it to go way up. After this year, I expect it to go way up next year, way up the next year because of what our office is doing, provided I can keep my people, the good people I've got. I can't do it all myself. I've got really good people I want to keep. They're doing good for Hunt County. We also give money back to the state, it's back to the county, fines, court costs, restitution we get for victims. We got a grant that goes back to the county for CPS grants approximately $49,000 minus an administrative fee, bond forfeiture money that goes back. I think, to sum it up, you guys can ask any questions you want. Hunt County deserves to, for our office, is prosecutors be treated like everybody else and not to be discriminated against. Hunt County deserves that. My employees deserve it as well. I will fight for my employees, just like I'm going to fight for the citizens of Hunt County, and just like you all fight for your employees. I will fight the same way. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Couple points of clarity. We have not voted on any cost-of-living raise.
I understand that, but the proposed budget didn't include it.
We don't have a proposed budget yet. We just got something, a working copy. Proposed budget will be filed sometime in the next 10 days.
I apologize, Judge. The working copy did not include cost-of-living raises for only the county attorney's office and district attorney's office.
We put a number down so we could see where our budget is. That's all.
And we were excluded, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now then, you said your 10 people are sharing the SB 22 money. Well, that's $25,000 they got last year on that calculation. Nobody in the county got over $5,000 raise. And hang on, and every department is going to come and say the exact same thing you're saying. And we agree. I mean, we got a lot of people in a lot of departments, not just yours, that aren't getting paid what we ought to be paying and what they can probably go get somewhere else. So we, it's, this court has a hard time to satisfy not only you, the employees, but the public, and we only got a certain amount of money. And I think this court, you know, after a year or two, and it catches up, I think we said this last year, that because everybody got such a big bump in those that nobody else was getting, it would have been terrible up here because everybody would have wanted $25,000 raises. So when you're sitting up here and not standing down there, it's a different perspective. And I appreciate yours, and I understand it, but we haven't made a decision yet. But it's going, it's a hard decision for this court to make.
But the draft budget excludes us, A. And B, you are taking care of your people. You're taking care of yourselves, too. Each and every one of you are getting COLA raises. Your incomes are going up substantially high, 60% in some cases. Ours aren't. $88,000 for an attorney, an entry-level attorney, if you don't have, even if you add $25,000 to it, it doesn't equal some of the salaries up here. And I'm sorry, I'm not going to get anybody that can go somewhere else making twice as much because they've got two degrees and a license. It's a big difference. The comparison is not the same. And the state of Texas has come out and said, "This isn't right. You can't compete." Let's give all the money to law enforcement, which they deserve, they deserve more than what they get. Let's give hundreds of thousands of dollars, but we don't care if you prosecute it or not. Well, my daughter went two years with her car getting stolen and nothing being done about it because we didn't have a proactive county attorney to go out and ask what the heck is going on. He stole someone else's car a year before, and it got no action because somebody didn't do their job, not the prosecutors, but somebody didn't do their job. Well, that's corrected this year because we're taking proactive actions to work with law enforcement, say, "This is what you need to do to get us the cases." They're doing good now. Since March 2021, hadn't filed a case with the county attorney's office, one agency, where there's no crime in this area. I'm not trying to pick it, pick on anybody or point anybody out. It's because you don't have the leadership to go out and talk to them and tell them. If somebody doesn't want this job, or you can't get qualified people, they're going to sit around and accept a paycheck. You need to be competitive. We're not competitive now, even, but we're at least more competitive where if I can keep who I got and get somebody in there on the entry-level position, we'll be doing good. Hunt County will be doing good. So it's not asking for 25% raise for everybody. It's bringing up this ridiculous $88,000 entry-level position and the other level positions, bringing them up to what they should be. And that's what the state has done for us. Now, you're chipping away at it. I'm not asking for anything. You ain't giving everybody else, except for the county attorney's office and the district county, district attorney's office. You gave it to everybody, but you excluded us because you said the state said you should get more.
So would you rather have the percentage raised then instead of the Senate Bill 22 money?
That's not an option. That's not an option. I don't want the county to have to pick it up. That doesn't even make sense. I don't want the county to have to pick it up when the state's giving it to.
Every other office in the county didn't get Senate Bill money. That's why they got the cost of
Because you're not a prosecutor. You got big raises. Look at your pay. Look at the judge's pay. Y'all are getting raises. Give us the raises y'all been getting. We don't need the Senate Bill 22 money.
Y'all got those raises every year, except when there's a big bump.
How is it at $88,000? I'm sorry.
It's, that was a pretty big bump, and I think everybody I'm looking at was pretty much here last year, too, before they got the raise. And so, you know, it, you know, Scott, we, I wish you could make a million bucks. I don't care.
You're hurting Hunt County.
Well, I disagree with that.
You are. I'm not going to keep the people I got as long as y'all keep chopping away at Senate Bill 22 money. I'm not going to keep them.
So curiosity, when Senate Bill 22, like I say, we saw with the charity folks, right, how state funding just ended, right? So when Senate Bill 22 money goes away, whether it's two months, two years, whatever, the salary that they have in the current approach is what they'll have the day that goes away. So if they make, if, we'll use lower numbers. So if you got, if they're making $100,000 a day, and they're making $60,000 county, $40,000 goes away, and then would, would we envision that the county just absorbs all that, or just everybody goes to whatever their salary is?
I've always thought that would, for me, that was my position. We'd have to hold the raises. We wouldn't give them a cut in pay. Because we would lose
So it's a short-term versus long-term conversation?
Well, it is. And, you know, we don't know when it is. And, you know, at some point, I think we even said last year, you know, once we get a little equalization, I don't have any problem going back, given the cost-of-living raises. But when it, when a certain group of people's salary got raised as much as $25,000 all at once, and nobody else was getting that kind of money, nobody on this court got $25,000, and most of it was under 5. And it's, you know, I've been here for six years now, and I brought wages way up in the last six years, not because of something, I'm not smart or anything, but our economy got better, our tax base grew, we had more money to start giving raises, and we got, had to get more competitive with people west of us, just as you said, except Rockwall also gets SB 22 money. Any county under 300,000 population got SB 22 money. And so, you know, we're fighting, and we helped the sheriff get his up because we couldn't get employees to work in a jail. We couldn't get sheriff deputies. So we fought to get those monies up so we could have people on the street. We got lucky in a way. I wish they wouldn't have passed SB 22 and let us try to figure out how to make it so we wouldn't have this problem right now. Because they made it. And the only reason they did it, and I, you know, I hope Dan Patrick's listening, because Dan Patrick got blasted around the state because they kept messing with counties and local government, and they were told more than once, "If you continue to attack local government," which they are again right now in Austin attacking us, "you're going to lose the state of Texas as a Republican." Because of county, the rural counties carry Texas in the Republican Party. And they said, many judges stood up and said, "I promise you, I'll go get my county to go Democratic if you continue to do this." Patrick goes down there, and then he passes this SB 22, gives all this money to the small counties as a peace offering, so please.
And everybody gets upset because the county doesn't have to raise their employee salary. The state does it, and then we say, "Let's just eliminate it," which is absurd. Thank you, taxpayers. Thank you, Senate Bill 22, for paying us prosecutors money that they said should get us competitive with the surrounding counties. And Rockwall has has a lot more money than we do.
Oh, absolutely. No question about that.
So even with their county and say, $88,000, I'm sorry, you need Senate Bill 22 money to make you competitive and not put it off on our taxpayers. That's, that's the thing about, good thing about Senate Bill 22, everybody up here saying, our couple are saying it's not a good thing. I wish we'd have never got it. I wish our taxpayers would have had to pay that. And I wish we were, go back to what we had, which is people working from home, people working half days. Work from home is a joke with the exception of the CPS attorneys. They work 40 hours a week, and CPS attorneys work more than that. They're up all night sometime protecting kids. That's what we do. Sexual assaults of children, murders, people want, people prosecuted after they get put in jail and they bond out the next day, or they get out on a writ in 15 days or 30 days. They want something done after that, and it needs to be done. We need to keep the employees we got. We're gonna lose them. You're gonna see, and I don't want to come back here and say, I told you so. This little bit of money, this little bit of raise that busts the morale of my employees is not worth the fight, I promise.
Scott, so can you tell me that number? Because obviously we have an emotional topic. How much money are we having an emotional topic about? What, what would that raise?
$27,000.
Across the department?
Across, across the whole 10 employees that receive Senate Bill 22 money.
$27,000, okay.
And that's what, 2,700 if you divide it by 10, $2700 raise. I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure you are getting more than that. I mean, I don't begrudge you for getting it. You deserve it. You deserve it. But so do our prosecutors.
I, I would just qualify one thing. I'll, I'll agree with the judge. The budget hasn't been submitted and done, so therefore I don't know that the people up here should be getting a raise either, so.
Okay, thank you. And I, I hope you do. I hope you do.
I'm in my first six lines, I can vote myself a raise.
We need to get good commissioners and good, I mean, I'm not saying we don't have good people. We need to keep people. We want, we need people to want these jobs. And then when you got prosecutors that require advanced degrees and licenses, it's a little bit more challenging to get an employee. We've had a three week position open. We've had one unqualified person that asked to be interviewed, and then we've had one person inquire it from the county saying, I can't do it for that much money. They would have been a good employee. I wish I could have got them, but they can't do it for it. So.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Nobe?
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Yeah, I'll just follow up with Scott. What, what he's put forward is all absolutely factual insofar as for years, for the 16 and a half years I've been here, our problems with trying to get employees, well, he nailed it. We have historically had a lot of trouble getting employees here. The bad thing with the county attorney's office is whenever we have a shortage, we pull from them. And so on top of just trying to get folks in the first place, with the county attorney, it's probably doubly bad because we often pull from the county attorney's office to come to ours. But I, I kinda want to go back, if you don't mind, a couple things. Gary, you'd ask about the cost. For our office, it looks like nobody is gonna get a call, proposed, and that's why we're here today before it is set in stone, so y'all will know what our issues are. But for the DA's office, it's $28,000 is what we came up with for that, everyone in the office to get a cost of living raise. And I think most important, or one, to me, one of the most important things is what this does in the long haul. This is really an overtime situation in that Senate Bill 22, and I, and I don't, I don't know if this is being impressed enough on the court. The intent of that law was exactly what Scott had mentioned, to, to law enforcement, to help law enforcement, to help the constables and the prosecutors' offices so that we could bring and we could retain folks. And the spirit of it is for that very purpose. There, there's not a, well, there's nothing else that's quite like it that I'm aware of in any other department, is the state decided we need to put that money there for a good reason. But the spirit of that is, the statute itself specifically says that a county cannot reduce a salary based on the award of Senate Bill 22 money, right? And there's been some discussion as to whether or not us not getting the COLA raises constitutes a reduction in salary, and I know there is an argument that, no, it doesn't. Your base salary is X, and we're not going down from that. But I think the better argument is that if it weren't for Senate Bill 22, every employee would have gotten that COLA increase, so that's actually what their salary is. So, so it does, it's kind of a back way around to limit, to, to reduce our salary. We're basically pushing off the cost of, to the county onto the state until we get to that point where it zeros out. And so I, I think, and Judge, you said something a while ago, and I wasn't sure, I wanted to make sure I understood. You said something about maybe as it gets closer, I think, or absorb some of that call, and I, and I might have misunderstood that.
No, I was just saying, I mean, with cost of living, if it started to, you know, get, even get, before it got equal, then we, I, it would be, in my opinion, they could start giving the cost of labor and raises along with it too. But early on, you know, like y'all said, it could have gone away immediately, and then we were gonna be faced with having to pay for those raises, or we, we would lose them. And I don't think anybody in your office that's not an attorney that didn't get SB 22, they got raises. Did they, Sandy?
No, sir.
You remember last year?
We, we did not.
They didn't?
So we, so they lost 5% last year, assuming there is a 3% or 2 or 4, whatever it may be, whatever it is this year, if there is anything, gonna lose that as well. And so let's, for argument's sake, you know, 3%, scuttlebutt, you know, who knows, whatever. But if we use that, 5% and 3%, they've already lost 8%. And, and in terms of it kind of crunching down, the, the zero out, if, the way we've calculated or what we've come up with, that's just in three more years. In three more years, in, let's see, last year's loss of 5%, lost our office 46,000 in additional salary. If there were, happened to be a 3% raise this year, now we're at 8, that's gonna be a $73,000 loss in total salary to everyone. And if we assume, I'm sorry, when I say three years, if we assume a 4% cost of living, if that's there, we're done, we're done in three years. But the thing I don't know, and, and this is part of the, the real problem for everybody in the DA's office, one, the county attorney's office, is when it zero out, zeros out, and Senate Bill 22 is worthless, what do they go back to? Are they going back to their 2023 salaries? Because they've lost all these cost of living increases over these years. So if we, I don't know, in theory, let's say three years, four years, Senate Bill 22 money, zeros out, they're, they're, it's a, it's a wash. All they've done is made their money over that period of time. Are they gonna go back to 2023 salaries? They're losing all that, not to mention retirement. You know, and as we all kind of get older, you know, our definition of elderly kind of changes, but in, in the DA's office, we got some folks that are pretty close. We got potentially Sandra Bell and Tommy Grahamfield and a whole lot of people.
Hey, don't pick on Sandra. Hey.
I said my definition of elderly changed. But, but it's.
Come up here and slap him.
She'll slap me later. We, we got that.
No, you may need the sheriff staying beside you.
Yes, you'd notice I was sitting by him, and I saw her come walking in, but it's, but, but that's, that's really where we are. We, we've got in the DA's office, and some of you may or may not know, but I, I was an assistant to Duncan Thomas for years and years and years, been in the DA's office in some capacity a long time, and, and we have such a good office right now. Not that we didn't before. We, consistently, we've had good folks. But we got a ton of experience, y'all, right now. I, I jotted down before I came in here. Steve Lilly's been practicing 22 years. Jeff Kobauch, we got 17 years in practice, and Katie McVaney, 16 years. Elijah Hollis is 13 years. Ann Taylor, she, well, this is an example of us stealing from the county attorney's office, but we pulled Ann over, but Ann has five years' experience. I mean, this is a wealth of experience that we have that benefits our county. And, and as Scott mentioned a while ago, and I'll always pull for the sheriff's department to get what they need so they can do their job, and for a long time, they were overlooked, and, but we're only as good as they are, right? Whatever they work, whatever they bring to us. But again, there, there's our end as well. As they, as they benefit or as they get more, which they should, we, we need that too. And if we don't have more people, we need more people who know what they're doing, right? And that, that's exactly what we have here. This Senate Bill 22, it's, yeah, it, it is what it is, but we're gonna wind up not benefiting from the Senate Bill 22 if we don't get the cost of living increases. And not to mention, I, I think I could make a good argument that it literally violates the statute itself when it says that a county cannot reduce a salary based on the award of Senate Bill 22 money. We're, we're just now starting the process to apply for this upcoming.
We asked the comptroller, and they said that we did not have to do that.
What's that?
It's, we, we sent an email to the comptroller and asked them about that very question, and they said we're not required to.
COLA.
We're not required to give any COLA. They're not requiring it in the program.
Okay, and I'm sorry, who was that, Judge?
The comptroller.
Comptroller, okay.
They're the ones that administered.
I understand.
One other point of clarity, the sheriff and the constables did not get any salary raises because they were already over the threshold.
No, no, I know, that, and that's, I've told Terry that, I said, that's part, I think, kind of a benefit for sheriff's department, is they're already at that threshold that Senate Bill 22.
Or they're past it, yeah. They're already past it.
That's right. But, but we weren't, and I mean, the only option that we had would be to, well, there is no threshold.
There is no threshold.
That's right.
That's why really, you know, they give a threshold on one department, then they don't give it on the other department, so it makes it difficult to administer.
But the only, the only alternative for us, I suppose, would be to refuse money from the state. When we divided it up, we divided it up as percentage wise based on experience, who's been in the office. But I, I just want to make a final point, two, two points actually. This really hurts our, the employees that are the lowest paid in the office the most, frankly, is that when they don't get that COLA increase, they, anyone who wasn't entitled to Senate Bill 22 money, or some of the other, the PIP funds or the state, we get $22,500 a year from the state, can divvy that up, but anyone who's not entitled to the Senate Bill 22 money by law, they, they, they get hit, get hit the worst. Matter of fact, I didn't think about this till this morning, and I need to double check and see, but Lori Creed is, is new to our office, and y'all, a lot of y'all know Lori. Lori worked down at clerk's office, district clerk, for years and years and years, and when Trudy left, we had a shift, and anyway, Lori came up with us. Lori wasn't in the DA's office last year. So she, there was no, there was no, nothing that she got whatsoever. She's here now, but if it's a blanket, no COLA for anybody in the office, she's, she's getting doubly slammed, you know, and that she's in the DA's office. If none of the DA employees get COLA raises, she, she just started working a month and a half ago, and she's absolutely stuck if she's not on the list to receive COLA, if, if y'all are following me. I mean, she wasn't here last, when, you know, last year to get any funds at all based from any source, whatever it may be for a COLA, so. Anyway, and if I'm mistaken on that, I, I apologize, and somebody can let me know and correct me, but appears to me she's kind of in a wasteland really, in, in terms of this issue that definitely needs to be addressed if she's not included. But then again, if she is included, so should all the other employees and county attorney's employees as well. So, anyway, thank y'all for your consideration.
Any questions?
If we need any, if there's anything that we can provide, if there's, if, if there's anything you guys would want from us that we can give you to help, we certainly will provide it. I think I speak for most offices. We'll, we'll bring whatever we need to.
We're glad to hear from both of you, and we'll take it under advisement and see what we can do.
Thank you, Judge.
You bet. All right. Nobody staying for our cokes and popcorn or anything?
Ms. Bell. Sandra.
Yeah, you, you need to get him. All right, Commissioners, you got a handout, when the court started, before the court started, email that I got yesterday from the tax office on the calculations of the adopted, 24 adopted rate, and then the, the new rates that are, are set by the calculations that the state makes us go through now. So the voter approval rate, or the no new revenue rate is slightly above what our last year's adopted rate by two thousandths of a cent, I think, so, not a lot, but it's up a little bit. The voter approval rate adjusted for sales taxes is 37, 6740, which is about, what is that, about 4 and 1/2% over the no new revenue rate? No, yeah, that's about right. And then our debt rate, I think, stayed about the same. Anyway, that's just for information. That will all be published in the next coming weeks to the paper and be published, but we will have to work through, hopefully, and get a proposed revenue rate that will also go out at the same time. You got any questions on that? Have y'all had a chance to look at it or? I did a little math this, can't turn my head now. I did a little math this morning, and a, every penny brings in a million, a million, let me see here, yeah, a million, $603,650 is what a cent is worth. So if you, you know, you can put it in terms, you know, a penny would, would fund the sheriff's request for his people and, and the supplies even. It would fund probably the sheriff's people with him doing the SB 22 money for the equipment and get close to covering the, the cost of living raise proposed of three cents. I think it'd get it pretty close. New money, I think it's gonna, it, that, where did I put that? It, we, we're gonna get around $4 million, new, new tax dollars, I believe. I didn't write that calculation down. Anyway, it's around four. You can calculate it, or I'll calculate it later, but it's, you gotta make sure that you go and look at your tax rates though, because our fund, our fund 10 money is not that whole tax rate, because y'all got tax rates too. So y'all have about 10 cent, 10 cents of the tax rate. So if you look at what we, what we were just talking about, it, it 32, if we went to the no new revenue rate of .325741, fund balance, that's, the fund balance, or excuse me, the fund 10 money would get about 67% of that total money, and the Commissioners would get about a third of it. And, and, and then an interest and sinking fund would get, be in that also, which is not a whole lot, but kind of gives us a, hopefully it'll give you a little idea of what, what kind of money that potentially we have to work with. And we're real close to having the last numbers. I think, Bernice, we're thinking by, by Friday at the latest, we'll have numbers ready to be completed with preliminary numbers. And I would like to be able to meet next week, but I, this courtroom's taken up all week with vaccinations, so we'd have to find another place to meet. And I don't know, we might could check and see if one of the courtrooms are available, if somebody's not having court next week.
I'm not gonna do immunizations, and the only thing is, we won't have any recording for the public. So now, Paul, not even.
Yeah.
You don't have to do the recording because you weren't at 100,000 and less since this.
Right.
You just need to change the way that the agenda is set up, the way.
Right. Well, we'll, we'll try to figure out something this week and see if we can either get an alternate location or see if, I don't know what they're projecting, have a number of immunizations come through, but there's, it's back to school, vaccines. Yeah, they're having a lot of people coming in, but I don't, I don't know if they can do it out in the middle. Yeah, I don't know if that would work for them just for a few hours one day. Anyway, we'll work on that and see if we can get a day, because I, I would really like to at least to submit a proposed budget sometime next week.
Judge, just out of curiosity, as, as we go through that, you know, so it's, it's been nice letting the people present and everybody kind of have an understanding of what they're asking for. When, when you go through and you have all the puts and takes as you try and assimilate this, will, will that budget be able to identify, or, or will it just be a number, or will it? it just be a number, or will it say this is in, this is out, that kind of conversation? I'm just curious how that'll play out.
There, it won't be, you know, it won't be highlighted or anything. I guess we might could go, take us more time to go back and highlight it now, but for the most part, there's not that many changes. I mean, most of it's requested, and the most part of them, they've requested pretty much what they've always requested, so there's not, there's not going to be any huge changes, except in, in very few departments, and most of those have been up here talking to us, so that's where the changes are gonna be, so. And we're putting in the, you know, we put the sheriff's budget in with all their request, which was for equipment and seven employees, and now, we talked about that last time, so they have the SB 22 money that's not committed to anything, so if they use that to get their staff, you know, to get their people, the equipment, they need cars, radios, vests, all those things, guns, all that, if they buy all that with SB 22 money, then that won't hit our tax rate, but the, the salaries will.
Now, didn't, didn't we go from seven employees to five?
We did.
Okay.
But he had seven, in his budget that's presented, it had for seven, and so, but he said he'd have to go back through it and rework it, so I made the suggestion last time, when you see the sheriff's budget, you can take out about $600,000, if, if we go with the five, if we give him five deputies, and then he had, they had outfit for seven, that we'd take probably $100,000 out of that budget of theirs, something close to that, and for round numbers, that'd get us pretty close, and not have to go try to change it right quick.
And then the deficit from last year is roughly two and a half?
2.2.
2.2, okay.
And I, we'll, we'll have numbers in sometime next week, I guess after all the deposits are made through the end of the month, then we can run numbers to see where we're at with collections, and really, the, the spending, there won't be any change in what, what we spent for the month, because we're not paying any bills today. But we'll continue to get revenue, and we're still a little behind on, on several revenue sources. I think the tax, the taxes are at 94%, I think the last I saw, I think it's 94, at the end of last month. So, it, it's creeping up to get, to get there, but it's not there yet, and at the end of last month, if you took the month average over the year, we're gonna, we'll be under the spending too, by some, so. Those might offset each other, I, it's just too far out to know, and I don't know how many big payments, Aubrey, you know if we have big payments at the end of the year for anything, or has it just stayed pretty, pretty steady? Mary, you know, anyone of y'all know? It's pretty consistent all the time. There's no big payments at the end of the year or anything that I know of.
There's five more payrolls.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's going to be close.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be, be close to being at same average, so we'll be after, after the, after Thursday, I guess, either Monday or, Friday or Monday, we'll be able to get the latest data, I guess, as far as revenue comes in.
Yeah, we was talking about the, the deficit, so when, when we submit the budget for next year, or approve the budget, whatever, is the, is the calculation in the deficit considered in part of that, or is that a separate?
No, it's part of, it'll be in part of the budget, because it'll be, we have to disclose that, you know, our revenue's not gonna be as much as I expected here, so we'll have a deficit, we could have a deficit budget. We're trying not to.
Well, I'm talking about the one that we just incurred, do we have to deal with, address that? Yes, sir.
No, it's, it just comes out of the fund balance. It's budgeted money to spend, so the fund balance would go down if we spend all of the budget.
Okay.
Anything else right now?
Do we have to have that budget approved by the 15th of August?
Have to submit it. It has to be submitted. Yeah, I'm required, as the budget officer, I'm required to file over the county clerk. August 15th is the latest date, and we've, since we've got numbers earlier this year on, on our tax rates, and we're close to having most of it in the computer, we, we should make it easily to, like I said, I'm shooting to file it next week. I hope to be able to file the budget next week. So, Friday's the first, so no later than the eighth, we'll have the budget submitted. That's why I wanted to try to sneak another meeting in next week, and right before we go to press with it, I'd like to make sure we go through it real well, and make sure we're all okay with the proposals the way it is.
So, you were saying Friday, but there won't be complete, I was wondering, could we have a meeting on Friday, just to?
We don't have time to post it now.
Well, as long as it's after the time of posting, you could have one late Friday, or anytime Friday afternoon.
You could do it at 10 o'clock, it's not, it's not 10 o'clock yet.
Bet she gotta, she gotta go type it up and file it. Run, Jessica, run.
We have faith in you, Jessica.
Yeah, you could do it, uh-
You wanna, y'all wanna shoot for one or two o'clock Friday?
I won't be here.
Oh, that's right, you're out of town.
Steve won't be here, Mark's out here, too. But we could do it. If I could run, I could make it for 10:30.
Yeah, I mean, if 40% of the courts are not here, that's, that's a bad, bad answer. Give you an easy way to blame all of us.
Can you dial in? Phone home?
Family comes first.
I understand.
To see my family.
I understand. I don't blame you. All right, at this time, we'll move into executive session under Texas Government Code Section 551.071. It is 9:56, and we're in executive session.
You want a motion, or are you just going?
All right, let me know when we're up, Steve.
Will do. Shows were up.
All right, we're back in regular session at 12:11. Under old business, item number four, consider and potentially approve exchange building lease for the Greenville Board of Development.
All right, we discussed some minor changes to that related to capital expenditures from G-BOD, and if you want to approve that lease, I would suggest doing that with, you know, approving general changes and then giving Judge S. all the final authority to sign so that that doesn't have to come back three quarters second, a third time.
Yeah. Judge, I move that we approve the lease with the Greenville Board of Development on the second floor for the exchange building, giving consideration into that lease for the capital expenditures that they will be providing, that we'll receive the benefit of that, and then add you to, once that's been incorporated, for you, give you authority to sign the document.
Along with the dollar amount originally presented, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
All right, got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Is there anything else before the court?
I don't believe so.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we adjourned at 12:13. Thank y'all, everyone.